Public hearing. Before I get started, I'd like to ask you to turn off your cell phones or any other electronic devices to avoid any interruptions. If anyone's planning on presenting testimony, please sign the sheet at the back of the hearing room. I'd like to call a meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, the 24th day of July. The time is 6:00 PM. Time set for the hearing. Mr. Davidson and myself are here. Commissioner Daley is absent. Mr. Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Sir?
No changes to the agenda. Okay. We do have some unfinished business that we'll take up first. I'd accept a motion to remove the unfinished business from the table.
I'll move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I'd second the motion. You've heard the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. In favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Okay. We first have up application as from the unfinished business. We have application 2024-00582-V Harold Schlatter. We had this for consideration in on the 12th of June, and we asked the staff to gather a little bit more information. And so that's the only thing we'll be discussing now is the information that the staff has for. So go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Commissioners. As you mentioned, this is a variance for two proposed accessory structures located in the side yard setback, the applicant's Harold Schlatter II. I'll do a quick reminder of what the application consists of, and as you mentioned, it was tabled from June 12th to allow staff to research information regarding the flood hazard overlay district and the Boise River Greenway overlay district and their impacts on the subject property. So pictured here is the subject property. It's located near Eagle City limits and south of the Boise River. Close in visual, it's a 4.84 acre property in the RUT district. It contains an existing single-family home and some outbuildings, as well as some pasture areas. Here is the proposal presented by the applicant. Here are the two proposed sheds, which would be north of the existing shop, close to the western property line. Oh, not projecting loud enough. I apologize. So as you are aware, there were some neighbors in opposition to the project last time, neighbor to the west and another neighbor to the southwest. There were concerns about how the accessory structures would be used. There were some notes about or some comments about past use of the property as a daycare, event center, and short-term rental. The neighbor to the west was concerned about negative impacts of the accessory structures on their property values and views. And also, finally, just a statement that, you know, there are other areas to locate the structures on the property. So to respond to that, you wanted some more information regarding where the actual buildable areas of the property are. And pictured here are the floodway, which is this darker green with sort of a hash mark through it. So that's a complete non-buildable area. The Boise River Greenway overlay is the lighter green. That doesn't allow for structures proposed by the applicant, based structure meet the flood hazard overlay district requirements, such as being elevated out of the floodplain and so forth. And so as you can see, there are impacts to the property, and this is the area where the applicant was proposing to locate those two accessory structures. In conclusion, staff is still recommending approval of the project, and I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for the staff?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
So is the... ...represents the parcel boundary. And so you can see it's kind of an irregular-shaped lot, but this portion of their property is impacted by both floodway and the Boise River Greenway overlay. And then the whole property is impacted by the 100-year floodplain. To further detail, you know, historic flooding or other things on the property that we kind of discussed last time, if you'd like to allow them to present that, I just wanted to let you know.
Okay. And that would be consistent with we had...
My name is Harold Schlatter. This is my wife, Sarah. We live at 7905... The details. So if we want to go ahead and actually, we're going to skip through a couple of the first ones. The proposed building, the site, we've already covered. Sorry. Go ahead. So the, one more. This last month, going around the property, looking at the different avenues in different places for which it was proposed that we might be able to place some of these. This is the access beside the property, just to get back, to have a hay loft back on that side. Yeah. And then the driving access that we have, so actually, the fence on the right-hand side of the picture, the other side of that fence is where the picture was taken that you just saw with the goats. Our driving access is actually over here on the left, directly next to the shop. So when we come off the driveway, that's our only driving access. Taken from where the star is there, down the side of the shop, that's the driving access. So that's where we have availability for actually accessing to pull a trailer full of hay back to unload it. Everything else would have to be taken by hand from the street. Next. This was the question, if we brought it within outside of the 25-foot setback. So this is actually the back of the shop. We made mention of the roll-up garage door, but that's what it looks like. That pink pole that we set there is represented, that is 25 feet from the property line, and that would be the front corner of it if we moved it straight in. So it would actually completely impact our ability to use that roll-up garage door. We wouldn't be able to get anything in and around there to use that. The next picture is actually taken from the other angle, and the current proposed of 20 feet wide would actually hit our chicken coop. So we can't physically fit it inside of that area with the 25-foot setback. And then next. This we talked a little bit about with the 100-feet setback, so you can see a little bit clearer where it is with the current other accessory structures and things around there. That, if I call attention to that kind of dirt area, just past it closer to, oh, excuse me, on the opposite side from the river, is where the current barn is. This satellite photo is before that. But the next picture in that dirt area will show you what actually happened a couple of years ago when the river was a little bit high. This is our neighbor's field, completely covered in water. You can't tell ours because the grass simply just continues to grow. So even though we're under 10 inches of water, the grass is, you know, 16, 18 inches high, and all you see is grass. The next picture is the current barn, and that's what happened when the river was high that year. And so we actually had the barn flooded. That's when we had to move all of our animals. So the single space that is behind our house up to that buildable area is where we had to place our animals to keep them out of the floodwater. And I think we're going to go ahead and stop with there. We don't need to go ahead and go into the other ones.
Any questions? Go ahead.
So you're saying you've reviewed all the options that you have in the, in the buildable area, and you can't, you can't build it any closer to the BRG overlay because the flooding from the river kind of encroaches into that 100-year floodplain sometimes?
Yeah. This is actually a better shot where the arrows are pointing. That's the barn. That's where that last picture was, and that was under about eight inches of water where that was. If you move just down a little bit into your right, behind the house, that's where we had to move all of our animals to be able to have high enough ground that they could be out of the water. And then we actually had to move our alpacas over to our chicken coop because that was the only place that we, because we couldn't fit them all in the, in the space.
And tell us again what the, the structures you're planning to build are for?
The very first, the second slide? Yep. So just three-sided structures, very simple. One of them 20 by 20, and the other one 20 wide by 15 deep. And the reason we did the 15 deep was because of the usable area. So when we came 10 feet off the property line, which is what our CCNRs say that predate the current zoning, when I came out 15 feet was where I had to stop in order to not block that access to the shop. And so then the other one, because the property line kind of goes back at an angle, the second one, we were able to make a full 20 by 20.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I have nobody else up to testify because we did limit the testimony. So...
Were the, were the neighbors who testified last time, were they here or wanting to testify?
Well, nobody signed up, so I don't know. Okay. Well, I kept the public hearing open from the last hearing, so I'll close. Is there anything we need to add to the...
Chairman Commissioner, my presentation and that of the applicants will be exhibits to the record.
Okay. Okay. I'll close the public hearing on application 2024-00582-V Harold Schlatter. Okay? I'll accept a motion.
Well, Mr. Chair, I'm going to move to approve application number 202400582-V Harold Schlatter, based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law contained in the staff report and the testimony heard tonight and at the previous hearing.
Yeah, I will second the motion. Any further discussion?
Well, I'll say that I think the applicant is met his burden, and I think that the impact to the adjoining neighbor is very minimal. Does not grant a special rider privilege.
Okay. I would conclude the same. So any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. I will now open the public hearing on applicant open. I'll hear from our staff. Amelia, go ahead.
Chairman and Commissioners, project number 2024-00412-ZC-DA-MSP-DRICK, as well as a master site plan and variance to operate a contractor's yard. The property is located at 7635 West Joplin Road and contains 4.65 acres, and the estate residence is within Star's area of city impact. Most of the surrounding property is residential or agricultural uses, with some high-density residential subdivisions recently built. The surrounding property is in the RUT district, which would allow a contractor's yard as a temporary and conditional use. The applicant is proposing to rezone to the C2. This rezon would be supported. The contractor's yard consists of only an outdoor storage area. No structures on the site will be utilized for the business. The applicant is also wishant. The master site plan is accompanied by a variance to request relief from the following standards: screening of outdoor areas, which the applicant is proposing to have the north and west side open, and the setback of outdoor storage areas. The normal rear setback of the C2 district is zero feet, but abutting residential property, the setback is 20 feet, which, as the C2 district does allow for reduced setbacks if they are abutting non-residential property, and the screening standards do allow for one side to be unscreened if it's not visible from roadways or abutting properties. The variance is also relieve and undo hardship due to characteristics of the site, as a portion of the property has a ditch running through it, and the location of outdoor storage prevents any effects on traffic circulation and nearby houses. The application was transmitted to agencies concerned with the protection of the public health, safety, and welfare, as well as neighbors within 300 feet. City of Star and our community and regional planners have stated that the proposal meets Star's comprehensive plan as adopted by Ada County. The Ada County building official commented that as no structures are associated with the contractor's yard, there, and there are only two employees, one which lives on site, and the yard is not open to the public. ADA compliant parking is not required. All unpermitted structures that are over 200 square feet will need building permits. Central District Health is requiring accessory use authorization from them if connection to city sewer is not available. There were no comments from neighbors on transmittal. However, the applicant submitted several signed papers supporting the waiver of landscaping that were acquired from the neighborhood meeting. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the rezon at their June 6th hearing, and staff finds the application complies with the Ada County Code and recommends approval to the board. This presentation will be known as exhibit number 37, and I will stand for any questions.
Okay. Any questions? Not at all. Okay. Is the, is the applicant here? You speak?
Commissioners, my name is Craig Colchak. I represent RCK Consultants. My address is 4839 Mountain View Drive in Boise. I am in support of staff's recommendation, and I'm up for any questions, should you have any.
Any questions? Hearing none? Thank you. Okay. Are there any additional documents that we need to add to the file?
There are not.
Okay. I will close the public hearing on application 2024-00412-ZCDA-MSP-V.
No other testimony?
No other testimony. At least, nobody signed up. I've closed the public hearing, so I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chair, I will move to approve application number 202400412-ZCDA-MSP-V, RCK Consultants, based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law contained in the staff report and testimony heard tonight.
Okay. I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next one up is, I'll open the public hearing on application 2019-00512-ZCDA-SMSP-TE Hatch Design. And we'll hear from our staff. Leon, go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Commissioners. I'll see the item before you. It was a time extension specifically focused on the preliminary plat and master site plan for the property. The change in zoning has already occurred. The applicant is Hatch Design Architecture. Pictured here, it's located near the southwest corner of Lake Hazel and Five Mile. Surrounding uses include a mix of commercial as well as residential properties of varying density. Here's a picture of the preliminary plat and the master site plan. The preliminary plat is to combine multiple parcels into a single-platted lot, and the master site plan is for multiple commercial building pads to be developed with future tenants. It's a mixture of retail and office and other commercial uses. The applicant can further specify that if you'd like. Terms of comments, only two received. Our building official had no objection to the time extension, and the Boise Fire Department on behalf of Whitney Fire District noted they can approve the project so long as it complies with their memo dated June 26, 2024, which really just points out requirements of the International Fire Code as it relates to access and building design, so pretty standard stuff. There were no public comments received. Staff does find that it complies with the Ada County Code, Section 8-7-6 for time extensions. The request was submitted in a timely manner prior to the entitlement expiring, and the applicant did justify the time extension request with explanation regarding ongoing conversations with Ada County Highway District as they continue to figure out the frontage design and surety requirements for Lake Hazel in particular. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval, and I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions?
No.
No questions? Is the applicant here? Welcome.
Jeff Hatch with Hatch Design Architecture. Our address is 200 West 36th Street, Boise, Idaho, 83714. Good evening, Chairman Beck and Commissioner. Appreciate your time this evening. We do have a presentation with the presentation.
Okay. I don't have any questions. This just is an extension, isn't it? Time extension.
That is correct.
Why don't you show us your pictures? I mean, you brought them, so whip through them real quick.
Okay. Yeah. Store in, I believe, Idaho right now is Reed's Dariot right here, which tells me that there is just not enough retail. So with the sewer moratorium in Boise, this is a consolidation of parcel coordinate with ACHD, if you want to go to the next slide. Primarily in regards to the access to the west, that was approved in our original site plan, but it was not approved through ACHD primarily because they were trying, we had it in the southwest where we have a seepage bed, and that was retention off of the roadway for Lake Hazel. We have also worked with them on a stormwater design up along the right opposed access, if you continue. So from that, the proposed access did shift slightly to the west, and they also recommended that we provide some future connectivity opportunities for vehicular access to the south. D came back with recommendations for those connectivities, and we're in support of their connection points. Wanted the...
All right. Do we have any, anyone else that wishes to testify in this? I have no one else signed up, but if there's anyone here who wishes to? Okay. So you know what? No takers? All right. Is there any additional documents that we need to add to the file?
Yes, Chairman. My presentation and the applicant's will be exhibits to the record.
Okay. We'll close the public hearing on application two. Close. I'll ask for a motion.
I'll move to approve the application number 201900512-ZCDA-S-MSP-TE Hatch Design Architecture, based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law contained in the staff report and the testimony heard this evening.
Okay. I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. We will next have up application 202101263-FPTE Manning Civil LLC. And we have Leon, our staff, to give us a report. Go ahead, Leon.
Yes. Thank you, Chairman Commissioners. So this is a time extension for a floodplain permit. The applicant, as you mentioned, is Manning Civil LLC. It's located along Ten Mile Creek Road between the Newark Canal and Coal Road. It's associated with the 762-acre site for the Spring Rock PC, which was approved recently. The floodplain permit is associated with a conditional letter of map revision, which will channelize a portion of Ten Mile Creek, and you can see that highlighted here. That has been accounted for in the Spring Rock PC and will serve as a sort of green belt connection through the development alongside this, as well as an open space area. In terms of agency comments, the building official had no objections to the time extension, and the Ada County engineer approved the request with standard conditions, most, more specifically associated with grading activity and floodplain, future floodplain permit requirements. No comments were received from the public. Staff does find that it complies with our section of code 8-7-6 for time extensions, and that it was filed in a timely manner, and also justified by the developer's desire to start Phase 1 of the Spring Rock Plan Community and associated grading permits, which will help formalize the conditional letter of map revision. So in conclusion, staff is recommending approval, and I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions?
No.
No questions? Is the applicant here? Go ahead.
Good evening. For the record, Dave Yorgason, representing the development, Spring Rock Plan Community. Our civil engineer for the floodplain portion is Manning Civil, and they have asked me to be here tonight. Stand here, just for the record, my address, 13965 West Chindon Suite 201, Boise. Agree with all the comments the staff's made. Really have nothing further to add, other than we're just progressing well with the grading plan, and this is one of the things that's necessary to do as we continue with the grading exercise. The CLOMAR is still intact with FEMA. This is just a step, and request your approval tonight. Stand for any questions.
Any questions?
No.
Have any documents to add to the, to the record?
Yes, Chairman. I'll add my presentation as an exhibit to the record.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. There any, I haven't seen any, I don't see anybody else signed up to testify. So with that, I will close the public hearing on application 202101263-FPTE Manning Civil LLC. Hearing being closed, I'll accept a motion.
I'll move to approve application number 202101263-FP-TE, based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law contained in the staff report and the testimony heard this evening.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Moving along, our next project is, I will open the public hearing on application 2024-00421-V-S Sherry Levitt. two zero two four zero zero four two one V dash S Sherry Levitt. We'll first get a report from Leon, our staff. Go ahead Leon.
All right, thank you Chairman and Commissioners. So the item before you is a preliminary plat in a variance. The applicant is Sherry Levitt. Subject property is located on McDermott Road north of King Road, near the Ada County and Canyon County border. Surrounding uses in the area include agricultural lands as well as large rural residences. The proposal is for a three lot subdivision. The variance is to allow for one of the lots to be smaller than the ten acre minimum in the RR, required by the RR District. All lots will access McDermott Road. Regarding agency comments, the building official had no objections. Community and regional planning found it to be in compliance with CUNA's comprehensive plan. The Health District had their standard conditions for land development application, fee per lot, test holes and a full engineering report. Ada County Survey requested updates to the plat which will be completed as a part of the final plat review. The Ada County engineer requested updates to the plat and also provided information on water quantity and quality and the future well for the property which they estimate will need to be at least two hundred feet deep. The Boise Project Board of Control noted an easement for the Van Duser lateral as well as requirements for future development near the lateral. And A C H D approved the standard conditions and will require additional right of way along McDermott Road, which leads us to some of the justification for the variance request. There were no comments received from the public. Staff did find the project to be in compliance with the CUNA comprehensive plan as we've adopted it, with eight dash six five of Ada County Code as it relates to subdivisions and with eight dash seven dash four of Ada County Code as it relates to variances. You've already had a variance in front of you, couple of them actually, so you're familiar with the findings. In terms of granting a special right of privilege doing that, we have done that in the past. The undue care to the site that the variance would overcome largely have to do with the McDermott Road right of way taking that will reduce the overall property. Responding agencies as well as no comments from the public, we don't believe there are any issues concerning the public health, safety and general welfare for the project. So in conclusion, staff is recommending approval. It should be noted that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the preliminary...
You wish to speak?
No.
Okay. All right, is there any additional documents needed to be added to the record?
Yes Chairman, my exhibit will be...
So I will close the record on, close the public hearing on application two zero two four zero zero four two one V S Sherry Levitt.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve application number two zero two four zero zero four two one dash V dash S Sherry Levitt. Based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law contained in the staff report and the testimony heard...
All right, next up is I will open the public hearing on application two zero two one zero zero five nine five dash C U M S P T E Breckenland Design. Our staff Brent Danielson will give us...
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Davidson, project number twenty twenty one zero zero five nine five C U dash M S P dash T E is a board level time extension for a conditional use and master site plan for a contractor's yard and shop. Two point one six acres in the airport industrial district. The applicant's requesting a two-year time extension for a conditional use and master site plan for a contractor's yard and shop. The contractor's yard will consist of a seventy-five hundred square foot shop and storage building and two five thousand square foot shop and storage buildings that will be developed in phases two and three. The time extension is needed to provide the owner additional time to complete the construction and obtain final approvals for phase one of the project. This is the applicant's first board granted time extension. If the board were to approve this time extension, it could be given until June second, two thousand twenty six. There are no neighbor comments on this application. And other agencies that respond to this application did not express any concerns regarding the approval of the time extension. Staff finds that this application complies with Ada County Code or recommends approval to the board, and I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions?
No.
Okay, no questions, is the applicant here?
Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners, John Brecken, Breckenland Design, sixty-six sixty-one North Glenwood Street. I don't particularly have more to add, we're just looking for a little more time. Construction is progressing and just need a little more time to finish up the first phase. Stand for questions.
Thank you. There's no one here to, that's signed up to testify on this, so, thank you. Is there any applicant, any documents need to be added to the record?
Yes Mr. Chairman, my presentation will be exhibit number twenty-two.
Anything else?
Uh, no.
Okay. I will then close the public hearing on application two zero two one zero zero nine five nine five C U M S P T E Breckenland Design. And I'll call for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve application number two zero two one zero zero five nine five dash C U dash M S P dash T E Breckenland Design. Based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law contained in the staff report and the testimony heard this evening.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, I will open the public hearing on application two zero two three zero two zero four seven S F P P R Kimley Horn and Associates. I'll ask our staff to give us a report.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Davidson, project number twenty twenty-three zero two zero four seven S dash P R dash F P is a preliminary plat, private road and floodplain application for a five lot residential subdivision. The property consists of approximately twenty-nine point five four acres, is located at thirty-two oh five West Deck Alley Road, which is at the end of West Deck Alley Road in the Rural Urban Transition District. The general location of the property is south of the Boise River, west of Linder Road. The lots are approximately five acres in size and will take access from a private road, West Prairie Fox Lane. West Prairie Fox Lane is being extended from the Spurwing Acres subdivision to the east of the subject property. There is a single family dwelling that is currently being constructed on the property. The subdivision complies with Chapter eight dash six of Ada County Code since the proposed lots comply with the dimensional standards for the R U T District. The subdivision is also in compliance with the Meridian Comprehensive Plan as adopted by Ada County as it complies with the low density residential land use designation which is intended for single-family homes at densities of three dwelling units or less per acre. And as the five proposed lots will be five acres in size or larger, the larger lots will allow for future redevelopment. The application is compatible with the adopted comprehensive plan. At this time, we have not received any written neighbor comments on this application. The City of Meridian has expressed concerns regarding the proposed subdivision. Their main concern is in regards to the lack of an extension of a public road, West Stack Alley Road. West Stack Alley Road currently terminates at the subject property's northeast corner. The city would like for the developer to reconsider the lot layout for the subdivision by extending West Deck Alley Road west and having the lots take their frontage and access from West Deck Alley Road instead of the proposed private road. Connectivity is important to the city as they have plans for a regional park on the south side of the Boise River and for connectivity of planned future utilities. To address the city's concerns, staff has recommended a condition of approval that the applicant include a public access easement where Deck Alley Road could be extended in the future to provide better east-west connectivity in the area. When the property to the north redevelops in the future, a public road could be constructed on the easement in the future. The Meridian Fire Districters reply that the homes will need to have fire sprinklers. The Central District Health Department will require a full engineering report along with groundwater monitoring. The Planning and Zoning Commission at their June sixth, two thousand twenty-four public hearing voted to recommend approval of the project to the board. Staff finds that this application complies with Ada County Code and the Meridian Comprehensive Plan as adopted by Ada County and recommends approval to the board, and I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, are there any questions from...
Can you show us a map and point out the Duck Alley Road and where they would like the extension in the future?
Sure. So Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Davidson, this is Duck Alley Road here, and so this is the subject property highlighted in red. Duck Alley Road essentially ends right here at the, kind of the northeast corner of the property. The City of Meridian, what they would prefer the applicant do is to extend Deck Alley Road, so Deck Alley Road would then go along the northern property line, and then they would want the lots to kind of come off of Duck Alley Road, the private road. So that's kind of what the applicant prefers shown here in the safe road. Yes.
But there, you've put in a, as a condition of approval that it could be extended in the future?
They picked a twenty-five foot public access easement along the northern boundary of the subdivision.
So the city would have to build its own road?
Yes. Or if somebody else was going to...
Questions? Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here?
With Kimley Horn, address one one zero zero West Idaho Street, Boise, Idaho, eight three seven oh two. I'm moving quick. Developers on this property are Chris and Danny Anderson, Chris is with Sundance Company and the club at Spurwing, so that has a lot to do with this unique site. Teller is the civil engineer, and so is Haley on this project road for private road design and floodplain for the floodplain design. Next slide. So again, the project to the east is Spurwing Acres, which, so you can see Duck Alley Road comes off of Linder to the east. Next slide. So again, zoned R U T within the county. Next slide, no change. So we're proposing five single-family homes on this project. Average lot size is about five point nine acres, and you can see the homes shown with two projects here tie into one another. The project to the east, Spurwing Acres, is through the process, working through the process of final plating, they did just build that road. So the private road is sub to our eastern property line, we're proposing to use that same road. This whole area is very transitional into the golf course to the south, so it's a, you know, rural estate luxury subdivision, and trying to make sure that we have a similar typology as the subdivision to the east for consistency. So we did hear all the comments from the neighbors and Meridian and the Fire Department and the Utility Department and staff, and we've worked with everybody to come up with a solution that we think is best to keep rolling with. So we're proposing that ingress and egress easement on our northern property line, and then that would ensure that should some of the parcels on our northern half have access to utilities in the future, they could be redeveloped and build that road at that time, and that would be more proportional to what's being developed with the new road. So next slide. So again, we're proposing to meet all the conditions of approval as written, so red is that public access and future utility easement, blue is a public utility easement. Next slide. So we did work with City of Meridian to update the comments. Part of that process is that they were willing to waive installation of dry line sewer. That had to do with, sorry, Spurwing Estates to the east did not build that either, so the pipes would go to nowhere and probably not be used for some time until the whole area redevelops. Next slide. So requesting your approval of the preliminary plat, private street and floodplain permits, and I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, any questions?
Sure, you don't want to build Meridian a road for them and save the tax dollars and money?
I think eventually when there's like a higher return on the investment, I think that was something they would consider.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have no one else signed up to, oh yeah, Sherry?
This is for the next hearing for the number eight.
Okay, well this is, we're still on this one, the, so you can speak on the next one. Okay, there is Sherry Ewing that has signed up. Did you want to speak? Okay, good enough. Okay, I see nobody else that are, that's interested in speaking on this, so do you have documents you need to add to the record?
Yes Mr. Chairman, exhibit number fifty-seven will be my presentation, exhibit number fifty-eight will be the applicant's presentation.
Okay. Okay, no further testimony or documents to be added to the record, I'll close the public hearing on application two oh two three zero two zero four seven S F P P R Kimley Horn and Associates. The file, the application being closed, the public hearing being closed, I'll accept a motion, any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve application number two zero two three zero two zero four seven S dash P R dash F P Kimley Horn. Based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law contained in the staff report and testimony heard this evening.
Thank you, I'll second the motion. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next we have, I'll open the public hearing on application two oh two four zero zero six nine three Z C D A M S P A C. And we'll call on our staff, Brent Danielson, to give us a report.
Dear Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Davidson, project number twenty twenty-four zero zero six nine three Z C dash D A dash M S P dash A C is a zone change from the Rural Urban Transition District to the General Industrial M two District with a development agreement, master site plan for manufactured home storage and accessory use application for the current dwelling on site to be converted to a caretaker's dwelling. The property is located at thirty-seven seventy-two North Kaneda Road, it contains approximately seven point five three acres. The property is located on the Ada Canyon County line north of the intersection of Kaneda Road and Eustick Road. The general area is transitioning from more rural to industrial uses. There is a contractor's yard next door to the south, and there is another property that was recently rezoned to the M one district, two properties away. Also, the Air Mountain Gas, liquefied natural gas facility is located just point one five miles north of the site. So we have the subject property here, and this is the Air Mountain Gas Liquid Natural Gas Facility right there. The applicant has the future land use map of the Meridian Comprehensive Plan as adopted by Ada County, designates the site as general industrial, which allows for a range of uses that support industrial and commercial activities. The proposed rezone to the General Industrial District and the manufactured home storage facility is compatible with the adopted comprehensive plan. The applicant has applied for master site plan for the manufactured home storage. This application will permit the currently unpermitted manufactured home storage that is currently on the property. The hours of operation will generally bring requirements around the manufactured home storage yard. Landscape architect states that the portion to the west of the structural parcel would unnecessarily deplete groundwater resources. Staff finds as per an issue of fairness that the request is unwarranted as the adjacent contractor's yard to the south of this property was find that it is appropriate to not have landscaping along the eastern property line due to the Phyllis Canal, along the Phyllis Canal, as trees and shrubs adjacent to the canal could affect the structural integrity of the canal. Nature of storing, delivering and removing manufactured homes from the property as the employee needs to be available at various times of the day and with varying amounts of notice to assist in the, in accessing the units. Having the employee live on site is also in the application. None of the agencies that have replied to the application have raised any objections to the rezone, master site plan and accessory use. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted to recommend approval of this project after June sixth, has set out on the proposed findings of fact, conclusions of law, and I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions, we're staff.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, with a caretaker dwelling, you know, the applicant has to, to show us the rationale behind why the caretaker's dwelling is needed. So typically with a caretaker's dwelling, it's either for, you know, if you have like a, somebody that you're taking care of, it's either taking care of the owner of the site or it could be, and so in this case, the specific reasons for the, for the caretaker for this property would be to assist clients in getting and accessing the manufactured homes as they come and go. In addition to that, the caretaker dwelling, caretaker will also help with security to make sure we don't have squires living in the manufactured homes, just making sure, you know, security along with facility, along the perimeter is, is in place. And then in addition with a caretaker's dwelling, the, the caretaker itself, the employee has to receive at least seventy-five percent of their income from the, from the property owner. So with a caretaker dwelling, it isn't just, oh, I might let somebody live here and then have them on my yard. They actually have to have a substantial portion of their income coming from the property owner.
That's spelled out in our ordinance?
It is, yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you. The applicant here? Good evening?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson, Ben Semple with Rodney Evans and Partners, representing the owner of the property. First, we are in agreement with the condition of approval in the staff report, other than the landscape buffering on the north and south sides of the storage area. And so I wanted to discuss that a little bit with you tonight. Brent, I think if you have those slides. Do you want to bring up the current site, that last one, sorry? Here, actually. Do you want the full PDF combined?
I got it right here.
Okay, great. All right. Yeah, I just wanted to bring up, here's the site again. You know, on the east side of Canada Road, south of us is Sunshine Landscape. Their contractor's yard, they run their business out of there. And to the north is a large agricultural field. He runs, or owns livestock and keeps livestock on that large field there. So the fencing that will be installed by my client will run the length of the northern boundary of the storage area, as well as along the western boundary between kind of that U-shaped drive and where that pavement color changes. That will be six-foot tall chain link with site obscuring slats or fabric on it to help with the buffering. And landscaping will be installed on the west side and around the caretaker residence. Actually, Sunshine Landscape is going to be doing the installation of that. And although the Sunshine Landscape Company did have to install their landscape buffer, they were going through kind of a different process of that contractor's yard. They didn't change their zoning. As Mr. Danielson stated, this is in a future land use of industrial, or general industrial in the City of Meridian's comprehensive plan. So it's anticipated that these properties are going to become some sort of industrial or commercial use. The southern neighbor has actually provided a letter, and I think that should be the southern perimeter neighbor. With his landscape buffer, he had no problem with my client not installing landscaping along the storage area because he has just installed landscaping and a fence there. The area of his site that abuts that storage area is a drive aisle and parking, and then some storage of landscaping materials. His business is kind of center on the site. Let's see, the northern neighbor, like I mentioned, has a large livestock field. He has peacocks and other types of livestock up there. And the fence along that, Brent, there's two pictures in there of the north and south property boundaries. The current fencing, so that's the proposed fencing, or an example. That's the southern boundary fence. They had installed a three-rail vinyl fence, and then their landscape buffer that includes a fair amount of evergreen trees and shrubs. And then the northern property boundary, there's an existing low chain link fence, and that neighbor was pretty excited to hear that a six-foot chain link fence was going to go in that's much more secure for his livestock. He also provided a response through email to my client saying that he had no problem if there wasn't landscape buffering. To be totally honest, he uses his southern property boundary to store vehicles and boats and stuff along with his livestock. And that storage area falls completely adjacent to his livestock field. It doesn't fall adjacent to any of the structures on his site. The owner additionally has already invested approximately $900,000 into this site through paving of the driveway approaches and the onsite circulation. They had ACHD-approved approaches installed last year. And then the entire area for storage of these manufactured homes, they placed a permeable gravel surface that is dustless. And so they've invested quite a lot of money into this for, for their income. And we feel, the property, property two to the south that went through rezon to an M1, they went through a similar waiver process, and they were able to provide landscape buffering along Canada Road and north and south of their structure and the adjacent kind of agricultural uses right now, and knowing that future industrial and commercial uses would come into that, to there, that will be outside of the storage area. They'll provide aesthetics to the traveling public along Canada Road, and it minimizes the water that, approximately 18 inches of road mix gravel that was installed and bring in topsoil and then run irrigation to that. Obviously, you know, the buffering of other properties that are in an industrial land use, we feel is an nuisance of water on the site where it's storing manufactured homes on it. So we would respectfully request that the waiver of the landscaping only along the north and south of the stored-
On this request.
We submitted it to Brent, and then he provided the feedback that, you know, out of fairness, that he felt the landscape buffering along the north and south should be required. If that's the, we just have to look at how best to treat that to come up with the points per the code.
Okay.
Well, did you bring that up to the P and Z?
So they asked me to attend. I don't believe that they brought this up to P and Z. Again, this site has been used this way for almost a year, and my client was-
Any other questions?
So for Brent, what, which sides are, is your office advocating that they do landscaping on?
So Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Davidson, maybe I'll, I'll bring, since Mr. Semple wasn't at the planning and zoning commission hearing, maybe I'll, I'll give a little bit of history, kind of a condition of approval that they would need to submit a landscape plan. The applicant, in their hindsight, realized, oh, you know, that if they wanted to do an alternative landscape plan, that they would need to bring this in front of the board. And so that's when Mr. Semple, who's a landscape architect, you know, kind of got involved with the project, was after the planning and zoning commission hearing. And then after the staff report was written, when I was doing my, you know, condition of approval and findings, I wasn't aware that the, that the road mix, that, that the applicant had already put road mix in all the way to the property line. So that was something I wasn't aware of when I had, you know, did the draft findings of fact for this public hearing. So in terms of the, the two property lines that we had recommended landscaping, we wanted landscaping along the southern property line, and then also along the northern property line. The rationale that I had in my recommendation for the southern property line was because the property owner to the south, Sunshine Landscaping, I had worked on their conditional use application for the contractor's yard. And one of the requirements that we had for that application was that they would need to, you know, do landscaping along their north and south property lines. And so I thought out of fairness, that would be, that the applicant should also have landscaping along the southern property line since Mr. Duckett had to put landscaping along his, and then, and then that would-
Before you go on, I'll ask the applicant, so did you say that you got a letter from the southern neighbor saying that they wouldn't insist that you had landscaping?
Mr. Chair, Mr. David, or Commissioner Davidson, yes, that's true.
Okay. Keep going, Brent.
And then also just, so the two property lines that we would require landscaping would be along the southern property line and along the northern property line. We wouldn't require landscaping along the eastern property line, along the canal. So typically with irrigation districts, they don't want to have any trees or shrubs along the canal bank because that affects the structural integrity of the canal itself. And so we'd be okay with just gravel or, or grass or turf, you know, along the canal bank, eastern property line boundary. Then the applicant themselves will have landscaping along the Canada Road front edge. So they would have landscaping kind of along this area here. It'd just be the back area where they have the actual manufactured home storage that they are requesting the waiver of landscaping from the perimeter.
What about the northern boundary?
So I think the, and Mr. Semple maybe could, could correct me if I'm wrong. I believe they're wanting to just do landscaping along here, correct? Along the northern boundary, is that correct, Mr. Semple?
That's correct.
And your office recommended doing the full northern boundary?
We did, yes.
And you said you've talked to your, the northern neighbor, agricultural property? And tell us again what those discussions were?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson, we obtained a letter from that neighbor agreeing that he didn't feel like landscaping was necessary. He was just excited about a six-foot chain link fence that was more secure for his livestock. He really didn't, it hasn't bothered him for the last year, everything out there. He didn't have any problem with not having landscape on our side of the fence.
So question to staff, the landscape buffer, which side of the fence was that supposed to be on?
It would be on the applicant's side of the fence.
If he has a fence with that black mesh on where you can't see through, what's the need for the landscaping?
So, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Davidson, with our, our landscape plan and applicants required to meet a certain point total along the property boundary. And so different elements have different point totals. So basically, it's up to a landscape architect to kind of design a, a plan, a landscape plan that meets those point totals. So typically with our point totals, with our landscaping code, you usually aren't able to really meet the, the required, the full required point total with just a fence. So to really meet the point total, full point total, you have to also include trees or shrubs or, you know, flowers to also meet that point total. So with the fence, they would get some of that point total, but they wouldn't necessarily meet the full point total just by having a fence itself.
Can you do boulders instead of plants? Do, do boulders count towards landscaping?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, they, they do. And as part of the, this process, the board is able to, to approve of, of an alternative landscape plan. So if the board is, purview is, is to, based on the letters from the property, adjacent property owners, you could approve through this alternative landscape plan the, the alternative landscape that the applicant is proposing.
And then you're going to have extra landscaping around the, the house or the caretaker's property?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson, that is correct. We do additional landscaping in the front. So when you're driving by, you know, anything that can be seen from the public right of way is landscaped and looks really nice. I would add that when we look at the points, when I take the, the linear footage of the area just along the storage with that site obscuring fence, we can, I think we achieved just over half of the points that would be required. I can't remember how many plants it was specifically, but I think to, for fencing, we would have to add something in the number of 120.
Are you building a caretaker residence, or is it one of those structures that's already there?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson, the structures exist on the site. The wells exist, or the well exists on the site. There will be no other permanent structures installed there.
On this application. Go ahead.
The storage on in a somewhat, call it urgent business situation I was in. So at the time that, I just want to give a little context for why I did- P-zone would allow storage that belongs to you, and, and these are actually right now titled in my name. And so in that context, I hired Nampa paving to pounds. And so it seemed, it didn't even cross my mind frankly, that permeable gravel road mix wouldn't be an acceptable sort of property line to property line use. Recogn, you know, beautify the edge of that storage area in a way that wasn't consistent with the neighboring property's purchase. And so I'm really hoping that you will have mercy on me and not ask me to remove it. It's 18 inches deep, and that would be extremely depressing, but I understand that that ends up being what's required. We're more than happy to do all the obvious, and to me, the intuitive landscape, if you're wondering how I got myself here.
Any questions?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else, I don't have anyone else signed up for this, for this application, so is there anyone else? Nope. All right, and you have some documents you need to-
I do. Mr. Chairman, exhibit number 51 will be my staff presentation. And then exhibits number 52 through 56 are kind of the pictures and the letters from the other adjacent neighbors. And those will be exhibits number 52 through 56.
Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing on application 2024-00693ZCDAMSPAC. So the public hearing being closed, what is the direction that the board wants to go?
Well, Mr. Chair, I would say that based on the testimony and the evidence and, uh, tonight, I, I would be willing to waive the requirement for the landscaping on the, the southern and the northern border. And that's, there, there would be some hardship to having to remove the gravel. I think that's number one. And number two, they, I think they did their due diligence in getting signed off by neighbors on both sides, which I think is really important. And I, I would be content to waive that as long as they're going to do the landscaping and make the residential part look pretty.
Okay, I'd concur with that. Now that means we need to table this until when?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think in this case you could still approve Brent's recommending approval, and you could specify that you want to approve the waiver as requested by the applicant.
Okay. Did you get that?
Yeah.
Make a motion.
Well, Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve application number 202-400-693ZC-DA-MSP-AC. SMR Development for Canada LLC. Based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law contained in the staff report, and further move to adopt the request of the applicant.
Relative to landscaping?
Relative to the landscaping waiver request.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Any other discussion? Is that clear, clear enough with staff?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Okay. You've heard the motion, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Well, carries, thank you.
You have our mercy.
Right. Okay. Next up, we will have, I'll open the public hearing on application 2024-00314CPAZCDACUMSP Kirchner Holdings LLC. We'll first get our, our staff report from Brent Danielson. Go ahead, Brent.
Dear Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Davidson, project number 2024-00314CPA-ZC-DA-CU-MSP is a comprehensive plan amendment changing the future land use designation from rangeland to industrial. A zone change of approximately 20 acres of the subject property from the rural preservation district to the limited industrial M1 district, a development agreement, conditional use, a master site plan for two contractor's yards, and a composting facility. The property is south of Boise and east of Cuna, near the intersection of Pleasant Valley Road and Cunamora Road. The property contains approximately 38 acres and is located at 16,000 south of Vista Avenue, which is the southeast corner of Cunamora Road and Vista Avenue. Cunamora Road is envisioned to be developed into an expressway in the future. The area to the south of the subject property is generally rural residential and rangeland, and there are also a couple of businesses along South Vista Avenue. These businesses include the Dusty Acres Equine Center, which is a commercial stable and riding arena that offers boarding, lessons, day use of the facilities with both an indoor and outdoor arena. Alex and Valerie Tim also operate an agricultureism business from their farm where they host farm-related events such as flower picking, bazaars, and classes. The area to the north has a mixture of uses, including a shooting range, rangeland. And the Iowa State Penitentiary has property that is about a quarter of a mile away from Vista and Cunamora Road. The area to the west is rangeland, other contractor's yards, a warehouse, and agricultural service establishment that manufactures and sells agriculturally related products. establishment that manufactures and sells agriculturally related products. The area to the east is rangeland. The applicant has applied for comprehensive plan map amendment to change the future land use designation of approximately 20 acres as shown by the hatch, uh, from rangeland to industrial. And the applicant is also proposing to rezone the same 20 acres from the rural preservation district to the M1 district. The A.A. County Future Land Use Map and the Comprehensive Plan shows four future uses in the nearby area. The areas of brown on the map are designated as rangeland. Yellow is designated as rural residential. The bluish gray is designated as public quasi-public, and the purple is designated as industrial. The two existing properties designated as industrial are the warehouse and agricultural service establishment property. The industrial land use category is intended to provide opportunities for manufacturing, warehousing, processing, distribution, and other industries that may not be suitable. The southern portion of the property will still retain the future land use designation of rangeland and the current zoning of rural preservation. The project also enclose the facility. The applicant owns a tree service business called Timberline Tree Service. The southern portion of the property, which is zoned rural preservation, will have the con, um, and that will be rezoned, that would be the contractor's yard in the limited industrial district, and the applicant is retaining the rights to lease this contractor's yard to different contractors. It should be noted that contractor's yard isn't allowed use, is that contractor's yard in the RP district is just limited to five years, and the applicant would need to reapply for the contractor's yard after five years. Whereas a contractor's yard approved in the M1 district could remain there in perpetuity for screening the applicant's proposing to construct a six-foot berm along the west and north property lines to screen the northern contractor's yard. Staff finds that the alternative screening plans justified as open shop state that the hours of operation shall be limited between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m., unless otherwise approved or restricted with a conditional use permit. The applicant has made the request for the hours of operation to be from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., operating their contractor's yard from their residence. However, their residence is in the R1 district, which does not allow for contract contractors who find themselves in a similar situation as they did. The property owner has provided letters from neighbors of their residence in the southwest Boise area near Coal Road and Laago Drive, who have stated that the Kirchners have consistently demonstrated themselves to be a response, a petition of those that are in favor of their project. Several members of the public have provided comments in opposition to this project. There are comments concerned about the comprehensive plan map amendment and rezone, as well as the proposed use of the contractor's yard and a composting facility on the property. They want the future land use designation to remain rangeland and for the zoning to stay rural preservation. They feel that the proposal will take away the rural character of the area and that they want the property to remain as wildlife habitat and rangeland for grazing. They are concerned that the project would cause additional noise, traffic, and visual impacts with the berm, equipment, and tree service debris. They believe that clearing the land would destroy habitat for birds and wildlife. They're also concerned that the compost facility will cause odor, attract insects, and introduce mold, spores, and diseases into the area. At the Plains and, and, at the Plains Zoning Commission, public hearing, the property owner clarified that the composting facility will just include woodchips and does not include grass or other yard debris. In addition, the neighbors were concerned about the scale of the project, and they were concerned about the neighbors leasing portions of the contractor's yard to other contractors. Since the Plains Zoning Commission is public hearing, the applicant has proposed some changes to their proposal to address the neighbors' concerns, as well as the Plains Zoning Commission's concerns, and provide additional clarification. They clarified that there'll be no composting of grass or lawn debris. It will just be only woodchip storage, and they plan to use the biomaterial for berming and other onsite use only. To address the issue of scale, the applicant has proposed to limit the proposed use of the northern contractor's yard to just the northeast corner of the property. So at the Plains Zoning Commission, they had proposed to have the northern 20 acres, uh, be designated for just a contractor's yard. They've scaled back, uh, their proposal for use, so it's just the northeast corner, which is roughly half the size of, of what they initially proposed, uh, when they were in front of the Plains Zoning Commission. The applicant has also hired Environmental Conservation Services Incorporated to identify resources on the site and recommend mitigation actions. Based on the soil types and lack of irrigation, ECS, uh, determined that the property is not prime agricultural ground. They also mentioned that noise from the shooting range in Cunamora Road is a deterrent for big game, and there is no evidence of big game observed on or adjacent to the site. A visual, audio, and nest survey over the entire site was conducted, and no birds or nest sites were identified by ECS. The site also provides poor habitat for birds as there are significant deterrents such as nearby residences, domestic dogs, feral cats, and noise from Cunamora Road and the gun club. The analysis was shared with Brandon Flack of Idaho Department of Fish and Game, and he responded that they do not anticipate effects of the proposed activities on native plants or terrestrial wildlife populations. We received, uh, comments from several agencies. Key agency comments are as follows. The A.A. County Building Official will require building permits for all new structures over 200 square feet. The Associate A.A. County Engineer will require a grading permit. The A.A. County Highway District is requiring for the applicant to dedicate additional right-of-way to toll 100 feet from the stairline of Cunamora Road abutting the site and set all permanent structures a minimum of 100 feet from the stairline of Cunamora Road abutting the site. Key conditions of approval include, uh, the following. The applicant will need to submit revised screening plan to include a six-foot berm along the southern property line adjacent to the tree service contractor's yard and composting facility. The contractor shall place and compact a gravel service course classified as type one or type two, meaning the specifications in Table 1, Section 2.2 of the 2017 ISP WUC for Crush Aggregate. And the applicant will also need to have a fugitive desk plan on site. The A.A. County Plains Zoning Commission voted to recommend denial of the application at their public hearing. The Plains Zoning Commission in their deliberations found that the comprehensive plan map amendment to industrial and the rezone of 20 acres to the M1 district is out of character and not compatible with the neighborhood. Specifically, their main concern was that the size of the initially proposed northern contractor's yard is out of scale for the neighborhood. Some members of the Plains Zoning Commission indicated during their deliberations on the project that they could possibly support a contractor's yard on the site in the future if the contractor's yard were smaller. The applicant has revised their master site plan to show a smaller northern contractor's yard. And also, one member of the Plains Zoning Commission stated that, that he did not have any problems with the tree service contractor's yard. Staff finds that the application applies with A.A. County Comprehensive Plan and A.A. County Code and recommends approval to the board as sit down on the proposed findings of fact and conclusions of law. The board has several options regarding this project, including but not limited map amendment, zoning ordinance, map amendment rezone for just the northeast corner encompassing the reduced size contractor's yard, along with, could deny the comprehensive plan map amendment and zoning ordinance map amendment rezone and approve the conditional use and master site plan for the contractor's yards, which would just give them a, a five-year approval along with the conditional use and master site plan for the wood decision. And I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions? Go ahead.
May I speak?
We're not there yet.
Not yet. Go ahead.
So under the current zoning, a contractor's yard is allowable, but has a?
Allowed in the RP district with a five-year sunset.
And then so we're, we're basically talking about two contractor's yards here, right? One for the applicant to do the woodchip business and then for one and not the other? Or does it have to be all or nothing?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, yes, you could. So there's a lot of different options on the table. I put four options, but there probably is more, more options than just these four.
And committee mostly related to the contractor's yard that's to be rented out?
Yes.
Because of the uncertainty of what would move there or because of the size or both?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner David, you've moved into that, you know, leased contractor's yard was also a concern of theirs as well.
And they had some comment about the character of the neighborhood, but, I mean, as I look at the surrounding large parcels with pretty diverse usage, what was the P and Z's, um, concern related to the character of the neighborhood?
Um, it's changing, you know, and they did acknowledge that Cunamora, Cunamora Road is a, a major roadway. Um, they were concerned more along kind of the properties that are more along Vista Avenue. Um, I think they felt overall, based on the testimony from the public that evening, that, um, that this would, would, based on the, the public's testimony, that this proposed, the, especially the northern contractor's yard would, would have an, an adverse impact upon the, the neighbors and the property owners that live along Vista Avenue and that, um, that it would change kind of more the, the rural residential agricultural feel of the neighborhood along Vista Avenue.
All right, thank you.
Okay, is the applicant here? Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, Commissioner Davidson. Brent, pretty much cut most of our PowerPoint down, just, we have similar slides. The Kirchners are requesting a contractor's yard as well as the comprehensive plan amendment with the rezone for the northern 20 acres. Go ahead, Brent. They're currently open, operating their contractor's yard on Latigo Street. They, go ahead, please. And this is where the contractor's yard is currently being operated. They keep a very neat yard. You can't tell the contractor's yard is located at this location. With the gate open, you can see the trucks and everything. Go ahead, Brent. And then the inside of the yard is kept very clean as well. Good. So the applicant's request, as Brent has covered, is a comprehensive plan amendment for the northern portion of the site from rangeland to industrial with a rezone of that portion from resident, uh, excuse me, rural preservation to M1, which is the limited industrial, uh, can, then the conditional use permit to operate the contractor's yard within that area, as well as a conditional use permit to operate a contractor's yard within the rural preservation area on the southern portion of the site. You can skip that one. You've already, go ahead, skip that. You, skip that one. Here's the original master site plan that was presented to the Plains Zoning Commission. You will notice the original master site plan showed the entire northern portion of the site that were requested and rezone to the M1 area has a contractor's yard. And then the contractor's yard for the tree service business is located on the southern portion of the site, right behind the existing dwelling that's located on Vista Avenue. We listened at the Plains Zoning Commission hearing, and we came back with the master site plan to address their concerns and cut that contractor's yard in half, reducing it down to 10 acres versus the 20 acres, and then screening that area off so it wouldn't impact the adjacent neighbors. This entrance from Cunamora Road, and this is significant, the Kirchners have already received approval from Ada County Highway District and constructed an access to Cunamora Road. So no traffic will utilize Vista Avenue for the contractor's yard. So it will not impact those adjacent neighbors. And that's for both contractor's yards. That's for the one within the proposed M1 zone, as well as the contractor's yard for the tree service business that will be located within that rural preservation area.
Is that in your conditions of approval?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd have to look into that.
Okay.
The applicant has already paved that access point to comply with the Ada County Highway District requirements. And then Brent covered the natural features analysis as already conducted by Mr. Bond with Environmental Conservation Services. Current use is located adjacent to the subject site. I'm not going to go into this in great detail. Brent already covered all these, and he had an aerial showing where all the uses are located. So if you want to skip that one, Brent. And then we've labeled them similar to what Brent has labeled them. And then views of adjacent properties from the subject property. This is from the southwest corner of the yard to the closest neighbor on Vista Avenue. This is the little one-acre parcel that this 38-acre parcel surrounds. And then this is view looking south from northwest corner. So they're at the corner of Cunamora and Vista, and then the property is the property there just to the left of the street, and that is Vista Avenue. The view from the proposed chipyard area showing the adjacent residents, this is the residence located on the one-acre parcel that this site surrounds. There are no windows on that house, on that side of the building. The windows you see are actually on the outbuilding located adjacent to the property line. And the view looking from west to the east property line. Brent Yard and the neighbor located at 16225 South Vista. This is kitty corner from the site, and the home sits quite a ways back from the Vista Avenue, as well as there's street, there's trees and everything that block the view. And then the residence to the south is approximately, I want to say approximately 400 feet away. However, all this area will be, they'll build a berm to screen the contractor's yard and area where the woodchips are stored. Non-residential use is located in proximity to the site. Brent's already covered this. This is aerial of the gun club right across the street from the subject property. Uh, view of the gun club, once again, that shows everything that they have out there. They rent RV camp, once again, the gun club. A little bit further south on Vista Avenue, this is a residence on Vista and on the east side of the street. And then the Commercial Equestrian Center, and all those were shown in the aerial where they identified all the uses. They're located in proximity to the site. But it's already been, I, I believe this is the ag business that's located on Cunamora Road, has been operated, operating out there for years. And then rangeland, and then we talk about rangeland. This blue is BLM Ground and State of Idaho property. There's several thousand acres of rangeland that are in proximity to the site that are actually public lands as well. And I don't believe there's any water rights other than the well for the existing home on the site. And the zoning ordinance amendment and its uses would be in conformance of the comprehensive plan if the comprehensive plan is modified. Nice, and your comprehensive plan is an expressway. So Cunamora Road is an expressway, and I also labeled Chindon Boulevard. It has the same designation. That zoning designation would be in conformance with the industrial land use category, and then the zoning ordinance amendment will be in accordance with the Ada County Comp Plan based on the goals and policies and what's identified within the findings that were presented to you by staff. Let's go back to that one really quick. The applicant support, it's kind of a hybrid, to rezone the property on the north in its entirety to that M1 zoning designation, and then limit what can be done within that zone to the size of the contract yard that's being presented tonight, and even the uses with the development agreement. We are o, open to entering into a development agreement to put what the restrictions on to mitigate for any neighbor concerns. Contractor's yard, this is all identified in your findings. These are the owners that were at the Plains Zoning Commission hearing who testified the locations of where their residences are. The contractor's yard where it's being proposed is the 38-acre piece right up against Cunamora on that corner. And then that little blue piece is the one-acre lot that is surrounded by the 38 acres. During the public comments with the Plains Zoning Commission hearing and parts of the staff report, Idaho Fish and Game did request the biological survey. We've done that. It addressed all their concerns. The proposed haul route and increased traffic, the traffic is not going to utilize Vista Avenue. The traffic will utilize that direct access to Cunamora. There is a residence that's located on the site. One of his employees will live in the residence, and he will be the only person accessing Vista Avenue to get to the residence. Berm visual triangle, that was with the original proposal of the 20 acres. There was a concern with visual at the corner of Vista and Cuna, and this, Cunamora, excuse me. And in this case, we're, we're looking to u, utilize the area, this, the 10 acres on the eastern portion of the? of the property, that concern goes away. Conformance with the comprehensive plan, if the comprehensive plan is approved, the amendment, the M1 zone would be in conformance with the comprehensive plan, and then the desire to keep property rural residential was one of the concerns. Property of similar industrial uses, gun range, contractor yards, prison, are all located in close proximity to this site. Lighting, we're open to having lighting restricted, Ada County Code, I'm really familiar with Ada County Code, I used to work for Ada County. We understand what's required for the lighting requirements, and we will conform with whatever lighting requirements there are. Then fire protection, that was one of the concerns. Right now, this ground is flat, has been fallow, there's been weeds, cheat grass, grass is growing out there. By allowing a contractor's yard, it will actually reduce some of those concerns based on the fact you will have gravel, you'll have breaks with the roads for fire breaks, and with the birmingham and everything else. Hours of operation and noise, the applicant is requesting to start at 6:00 so they can get out in the morning, they don't want to work till 10:00 o'clock, they come back early in the evening. And then what if the applicant sells the rezoned M1 portion? If the applicant sells that, and that's why we're open to entering into a development agreement, because that development agreement sticks with the land. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, any questions?
We're not there yet, don't worry, we'll get there.
You'll get your turn. Any questions?
All right, so, talk a little bit about the woodchip operation there, so now, is there, are they going to be building a facility, or they grind it outside?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, all the woodchips are ground offsite, it's a typical tree service operation, when they trim the branches and everything, they run them through those chippers, and they'll bring that byproduct back and store it within that woodchip area, they're not proposing to grind any onsite, and they're not proposing to construct a building to grind the wood, it'll be ground before.
They're just bringing, they grind it somewhere else and store it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, remind me again, is this going to be bermed and fenced all the way around, or just bermed?
And Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, it will be bermed.
Okay. I know one concern, nobody loves backup beepers on commercial vehicles, especially when you can hear them for a mile, is that going to be an issue, or are they going to be able to just drive in and out without having a backup?
And Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, if we could address that during rebuttal, or if we could, the owner of the company is here, he could probably address the backup beeper question, I'm not aware if they run backup beepers, I'm sure with OSHA requirements, more than likely, they do.
Okay. And then, I would imagine, you know, the neighbors had some concerns on the other contractor's yard, not really knowing what would be, who it would be rented out to and what they would be doing there. Was that the concern you noted at the P&amp;Z hearing?
And Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, correct.
And then you're proposing to reduce the size of the second yard?
Correct. Not only are we proposing to reduce the size, we're also working on contract, so when they lease that out to a tenant, there will be a contract that's signed between the Kirshners and that tenant, that it doesn't become a nuisance to the neighbors.
All right, thank you. Okay, we have a couple people want to sign up to talk. Hello, Jeremy.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. And, I'll press my button here. I live down at 17,000, close to where this is being proposed.
Maybe we could have the staff put that other aerial zoomed in a little bit more, but with a different usage.
So right next to the Vista.
This square directly south beneath the farm event. Yes, sir.
So that's us there, and we own and run a bison ranch there, and run about 200 head of bison, and so, as far as Vista is concerned, it's all ranch and ag, and we work on that land every day, and we run that land every day, and the concerns that I had is issue, berms do nothing out there. I have 15-foot berms out there, and while it visually, I guess, breaks up the view of a truck, it doesn't look good, it doesn't stop the wind, it doesn't stop there, and so, we raise our kids out there, I have five kids, and the oldest is seven, and the reason we moved out there was to get away from commercial and industrial. And the reason we're out there is to try to teach our kids how to work the land, and it's very different than the pictures you saw there, and the pictures don't do it justice, it's big sky, it's dark, starry nights, and it's quiet, and the things that you pointed out in the slides, as far as across the street from Cunamora, has very little impact on south of Cunamora. It's not how the neighborhood is really constructed. And so, people that are coming to buy bison meat from us appreciate what that looks like, I understand my time's almost up, I just wanted to ask that you would consider, we'd like to just keep all that land rural and rangeland, and we like seeing the eagles out there in the morning, we like seeing the hawks and the falcons, and it looks like they keep a beautiful yard, and it looks like they do a great business, and again, I mean nothing personal to them in this, but we just don't want that next to our homes, and that's why we live out there. And so, we appreciate the silence, and we sing home on the range for a reason. But I appreciate your time very much, and respectfully, we'd ask that you just, that we wouldn't have any industrial stuff on south of Cunamora, let Vista be residential and let it be rangeland, and the ground is not fallow at all, we can grow alfalfa out there tomorrow, and we know the land, but we work on the land every day, so it does require some effort, but it's all very doable. But thank you for your time, appreciate it very much, and wish the best to everybody involved.
Thank you, any questions? You have any questions?
No.
All right, thank you. Adam? Adam Fern Aaron, oh, there you go.
Evening. Evening Commissioners, my name is Adam Evan, I'm at 16225 South Vista, I am more or less across the street from where the proposed contractor's yard is going to be. I live there with my family, my wife Erin, my 11-year-old daughter Hannah, and my son Jack, and my other daughter Sarah, they play outside, we are in a rural area, everyone on the street, the other dozen people that live on South Vista are all families, we get together for potlucks, we see each other all the time. Driving onto South Vista, turning off of Cunamora, is a totally different environment than what you see on just those overhead satellite images, it is not what they have made it out to be, it is houses, it is families, it is children, and putting even 10 acres of parking lot will contain hundreds of industrial trucks, this is an eyesore, and if you, we actually submitted some photos, do you have those?
Yep.
So, you can't see them so well, but I mean, that's from our backyard right there, that's our kids, our sheep, our dogs, and then you look in the distance, and you don't see anything, can you show the next one? So that's at our front lawn, or our front gate, you don't see anything, there's houses on either side of that, this is a shot right in between, but there's nothing out there, you don't see any industrial, it's just families, go to the next one. So that's down the street from us, again, it's just houses, you don't see the gun range, which is like two or three buildings, which is only really open to the public once or twice, you just see our neighbors, the cooks, you go a little bit further down, and you see our neighbors at Vista Farms, which is just planted lavender, and they had an event where they had people over, and they sold lavender and products and things like that, that's not a commercial agricultural business in the sense of what we're hearing. Next one, please. And again, this is down the street, again, our neighbors and towards the shooting range, you don't see the shooting range, but when you drive down that street, if you allow 10 acres of parking lot, we're going to see hundreds of vehicles, it is completely out of character with where we live and what we're doing, and we paid a lot of money for that land, we paid a lot of money for rural preservation, and the idea of having it suddenly turned into a giant parking lot is just crazy to us. I mean, we're all a very close-knit neighborhood, we're on a constant text chain talking to each other back and forth, we all know each other. The people who bought the land, we were willing to welcome them, but they didn't move in, they moved somebody else in, and then within a few months of that, we had sheriffs with guns drawn at their house, while all of us are waiting outside to see what's going on. They are not a part of our neighborhood, they didn't want to be a part of our neighborhood, and we definitely don't want a giant 100-acre, 10-acre parking lot on our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Betty Kidby?
Hi, I'm Betty Kirby, I live at 6240 South Latigo Drive, Boise, 83709. I live Kitty Corner across the street from Pam and Eric currently, there are only four houses on our street that are impacted by their business, and I own one of them. They drive by my house every day as they come and go, they've gone out of their way to be considerate of the neighborhood, they fenced the entire yard with vinyl in the front and placed a gate back from the street so the drivers can pull through while still checking the street, providing jobs for themselves and their eight employees. When employees arrive, they park in the yard and not on the street, they pick up residents used to commute to work. There are fewer workdays in winter, and their drivers are very considerate when I'm out walking my dog, have they had zoning complaints filed against them? I have seen several homes with many large trucks and big equipment on their lots, there's a carpet cleaning company, an outdoor building materials yard, and who knows what is happening on the southeast corner of Victory and Bridge in my neighborhood, and even though this is also illegal, due to understaffing at the sheriff's department, this cannot be addressed. I had planned to testify for them if they had sought a variance to stay on land.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have anybody else that wishes to?
Yes, I would like to speak.
Oh, who does?
Charlene Fackrell.
Oh, you've moved, come on up, please.
Charlene Fackrell, and I lease land from the cooks for my cattle, and they directly adjoining the property, it's directly to the south.
To the south, okay.
Yes, the adjoining property that's right next, so on the north boundary line of that property where you saw, there was pictures of the fence line, right? The wobbly, and my cattle are at risk for getting out, but with a no trespassing sign, they've made it not very amicable to approach, hard to replace from a rural preservation zone, that's why I went out there, is because it wasn't in an industrial zone, so I wasn't aware that I could put cattle in an industrial zone, I'm just being facetious a little bit, I think integrity of the neighborhood, and so that a lot of the properties do have agricultural things that they do on their property, and I'm one that has, you know, cattle, and I would fear that the fire hazard that would possibly occur, if you remember back to Diamond Street Recycling, they had a big enormous fire, compost fire, and it took days to get that thing out, there is no adequate fire protection in that area whatsoever, across the street, right at the Rodden Gun Club on Cunamora, that is on the north, north of Cunamora, there was just recently a fire, and it burned up some ground up there. So, all of that dry brush does not help for having, where you're running equipment, that could possibly start a fire, and there is no buffer, you know, if you put a berm, cattle can go over that, and, you know, and they've got no trespassing, so how am I going to get my cattle if they were to ever get out, and with fencing of having no trespassing for that adjacent property of the cooks, you know, you, that fence is about ready to fall over, I haven't put my cattle in there because I was concerned about the fence falling over, so they have not maintained that fencing whatsoever, and they claimed no trespassing right on that corner of that fence post, you know, where they share the adjacent fence line.
Okay, anything else?
Yes, I would request that you deny the application based on it being an agricultural neighborhood, and it is a neighborhood, and it is hard to find rural preservation, so you can put livestock to graze, and that's what I've been doing, is using it as grazing for my livestock, and having room for them to be there, without being in a zone where neighbors are adjoining that don't appreciate having livestock there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Got a question for you, go ahead.
Wouldn't it be your responsibility to put up a fence for your cows?
Well, when you put no trespassing, you know, that fence line is, it's not mine, I just leased the ground, but I'm just saying that, you know, when you put no trespassing, it's not sending good vibes that you want to work with your neighbors.
But you're worried that the fence is going to fall over?
Oh, yeah.
I'm just asking, I mean, okay, you're leasing, but shouldn't it be the owner of the property you're leasing, wouldn't it be more his responsibility to put up his own fence to keep the cows in?
Well, you're sharing a fence line, and when you have no trespassing, how are you going to do it?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, you had a gentleman over here that didn't sign up, but go ahead, come up, give us your name and address.
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Phil Van Sickle, I live at 6228 South Latigo Drive, I'm directly across the street from the Kirshners, I've lived on Latigo Drive for the past 11 years, and Latigo Drive is about family, we have a lot of families with small children who live on our street, I've raised my daughter there, the Kirshners have had their business directly across the street from me for the past eight years, there hasn't been hundreds of trucks, there hasn't been a lot of noise, there hasn't been fires or pests or vermin, in fact, I barely noticed them, they've been some of the nicest neighbors I've ever had. When they moved in across the street, the acre lot that they have their trucks on was just weeds, it was just dirt and weeds. They cleared that lot, they put gravel on it, they put a nice fence around it, they put some nice landscaping up front, they've done a spectacular job, and they've been great neighbors. I'd like 10 more of them, in fact, I'd prefer their tree service to be across my house than, say, a couple duplexes or fourplexes, which I see popping up all over my neighborhood, so. I honestly don't think that the people on Cunamora Road have anything to fear from the Kirshners, they run a great business, they're quiet, and as far as I know, everything they do is above board. Thank you.
So I take it you're in favor of the application?
I'm in favor.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, I'll ask you a question too?
Sure, question.
So how many trucks do you notice in their operation?
About maybe a dozen. They go out in the morning, early, and they come back in the evening, and that's it. They don't really add a lot of traffic to our street, as far as I'm concerned, they're employing people, they're providing a necessary service for the community, and they're a local Idaho small business, and I support that.
Any issue with the backup alarms on the commercial trucks?
I've never noticed, I've never noticed any backup beepers or significant noise from heavy equipment, and I don't notice the noise of their equipment, and there are people who have farm animals in the back of their property.
Thank you. All right, do we have anybody else that wishes to speak?
For to South Vista Avenue, I own Vista Farms down the road, it sounds like the best outcome tonight would be to allow them to continue operating where they are in their neighborhood with their current neighbors in support, and so we would be supportive of that. We appreciate Planning and Zoning Commission recommending denial of the application if it is not compliant with the Ada County Comprehensive Plan and five sections of the code, that was some of the feedback that we had as well. That was some of the feedback that we had as well. There were over about 100 pages of opposition to this project presented to Planning and Zoning with maintain the land as it is and not come in with a bulldozer and turn it into a parking lot. The applicant is falsely stating that they want two contractor yards. They revealed in Planning and Zoning that they want 21 contractor in, in our neighborhood. There will be contractor yards on Cunamora Road. We're asking that that does not happen on Vista Avenue because we have rural residences there. The composting facility with wood chips is a concern for us with the composting facility as well. The goals in the Ada County Comprehensive Plan 2.4 and 2.5 look at preserving the rural character. Support Ada County will preserve private property rights and values and mitigate against incompatible and detrimental neighboring uses, which we feel this project very clearly shows. The applicant also gave us an Exhibit 70 in your packet, a letter that they signed stating that they would not request a zoning change based on our feedback in the neighborhood meeting, which they tried to intentionally backdate so that we wouldn't be able to come. We had to ask them to do another one. So they were trying to subvert even just having a conversation with us and being honest about what they want to do to us, to Planning and Zoning and to, to you tonight as well. And they were going to ask for a conditional use permit for one contractor's yard, not 21 of them. So that is kind of what we've seen through the process and we really want to keep it agricultural. Preserving agricultural land is really important. We know that there's industrial development happening west of Pleasant Valley, but we're the only rural neighborhood in the seven miles from Pleasant Valley to the 84. Thank you.
Okay, any questions? Go ahead.
So you understand, certainly according to staff, our ordinance under the rural preservation, you can still have a contractor's yard, but it's subject to a five-year review?
Yes.
So even under the current state of the law, a contractor's yard could go there?
Right, it, it's a potential conditional use, but we think that it's detrimental and incompatible with our neighborhood because they are proposing for that area to have the composting facility, which is five acres of wood chips, which is highly flammable and there's not a lot of water out there. It took about 25 minutes for fire to get to us after we called in that fire right next to the gun range. It went right up to the shooting range property and was about to jump the street. I even think their, their sign for the hearing was charred after that. So it was right up to their property. And that's a very real concern to us because we don't have a lot of water out there. So we'd have to be putting that out with our own sprinklers and wells and that, that is a very significant concern. So even though we can't have a contractor's yard out there, having a tree service dumping a lot of debris in the middle of the desert where it's high winds and not a lot of water, doesn't seem like a great use of that land.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else wish to speak on this application? Okay, come on up, sir. I wish you'd have signed up. Hey, give us your name, your address.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson. My name is Alex Dimm. I live at 16842 South Vista. That was my wife Valerie. And I just want to express my strong opposition to this project. Vista Avenue, you're talking about getting a feel for the neighborhood. It's the only rural residential agricultural street in that whole area. And I think the pictures they, they showed were just kind of ridiculous, like pointing out a light post across the street and trying to make it seem commercial and some commercial business on Cunamora. Those aren't on Vista Avenue. There's, they didn't show cows, they didn't show bison. I, I think it was just kind of a, a cheap shot at our, our neighborhood and trying to make it not seem like there's actually families and people living here. And really what I think is like, this project is, it's, it's asking, even with their updated master site plan, it's still asking to bulldoze over 15 acres in a neighborhood of rural preservation land and, and turn it into a parking lot, like, like everybody said. And what they want to do is, is have that 10 acres be a contractor yard rental business. And in the Planning and Zoning hearing, they mentioned there were some questions about, well, you know, what are these one acre pieces, these 10 or 21 acre pieces at that time going to be used for? And, and there was no restrictions. They, they, there would just be any business that wants to come in and put trucks, put cranes, whatever it is, six in the morning, 10 p.m. I understand that their neighbors in their current neighborhood, you know, have no problem with them, but you know, they're not going to be our neighbors. They're renting that house. And, and I have no idea, you know, what the character is of the people that are going to be renting that property, quite frankly. And I, I think the scale of this project, even with the update, I mean, it's just, I think it's just ridiculous to put it in our neighborhood. I understand it's, it's a conditional use, but it doesn't mean it has to be approved just because it could be approved. And I think with all the neighbors that live on the street opposing it, I, I just don't think it makes sense to approve this project at all. And I, I agree with the Planning and Zoning Commissioners that this project creates undue adverse impacts to the neighbors. And, and that goes directly against 8-5B-5 Part B. And that's why the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial. So I, I'm asking you to do the same thing. And, you know, since their neighbors like them in their current neighborhood, I don't see why there couldn't be a variance to let them keep running their tree service there. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions? No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak that didn't sign up? Okay, give us your name and address.
Amy Nindorf, 15950 South Vista Avenue. I live on the one acre parcel that's surrounded by their 38 acres. And I apologize for not signing up. I missed the sheet wherever that was.
That's all right.
But I appreciate your guys' questions that you've asked. It does show that you really do care. And you've even thought of things that I never thought of, especially a giant commercial business right there. I wouldn't have a problem if they were moving their current small business to that property. And so far, right now, they're, and I really do think it'll have a huge detrimental effect on my property value and my quality of life. I've also, they've mentioned the, the cheat grass and the, at the time, that whole property had a very well-maintained fire lane that was maintained and driven over weekly by my husband and the previous property owner, popping the orange stuff. It was very scary. We pay a high premium for our homeowner's insurance because it is more than 10 miles from the nearest fire station. And it takes them a long time to get there. I think storing all home up. So we do have firewood in the back of our home. We do sometimes have logs in the back of our home that my husband brings home to cut up for firewood. It's our personal supply. I think a bunch of acreage as we can. And I know I can't completely keep it 100% safe, but that's it. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. All right, do we have anybody else wish to testify?
Chris Maloney, 16825 South Vista Avenue, Kena. I don't have much more to say than what my neighbors have said. I mean, all the key points have already been?
Thank you. Anyone else? Last call.
So the, the Kirshners are not here or not?
No, they're, they're sitting right behind us, miss.
Are they, are they available to answer questions?
Yes, sir.
In your, in your time? Could we, could we bring them up with you if we have questions that you can't answer?
Yes, absolutely.
Davidson, once again, Mike Williams, Steelhead Land Use Consulting. So we can address all the points that were brought up. Number one, the fence with the cows. On the Kirshner's property, there's a white vinyl fence. And that may be what she's referring to is the white vinyl fence. On the opposite side of that, on the, the lady's property who complained about the fence, there's actually a barbed wire fence there. And since they're running the cows, they should be responsible for the maintenance of that fence to keep those cows in.
So who owns the barbed wire fence?
I would assume the?
The? Who are just to the south of us.
The Lesors.
The Lesor? Okay, the Lesors.
So there's a barbed wire fence and then a vinyl fence?
And we, and we have a white wood fence, Ashley.
A wood fence.
And their cows keep knocking over the wood fence, but there's still a barbed wire fence on their side.
Okay.
Just real quick, for record purposes?
Oh, first?
Talking, will you just announce who you are so that if it gets into a transcript, we know who's talking?
Thank you. As far as all the uses on Vista Avenue, there are several uses. There's the buffalo ranch, there's a commercial equestrian facility, there is a lavender farm. All these are commercial uses and all these uses use Vista Avenue as their sole access for their commercial businesses. The folks with the buffalo farm actually bring hay down Vista Avenue to feed the buffalo. The equestrian facility, horses, trucks and trailers. The lavender farm runs regular events. All those are utilizing Vista Avenue, that local street for their access. I want to point out, all the access for these contractor's yards is going to take access from Cunamora Road and Cunamora Road only. Weed abatement. The Kirshners as part, they own the property. If this is approved, they'll be out there for weed abatement, keep the weeds knocked down so it doesn't get out of hand so somebody out there doesn't, or even the Kirshners don't end up with another fire on the property. It doesn't benefit them either if they're not maintaining the property. They will have equipment located on this property that they have to protect. They covered the fence, barbed wire fence. Covered lavender farm and the regular events. The wood chips are being stored in the storage area. They're coming off green trees, so they're not that flammable. And Eric could probably expand on that as well. Is their intent to actually use those wood chips for ground cover as well as use them on the berms? It'll somewhat decorate the berms. At the same time, it will mitigate the dust during any windstorms. And then you asked about the backup beepers previously. All the trucks do have backup beepers. If you look at the master site plan, that site plan is set up with a looped road. So when they come and they leave, they're always in motion forward. So that way they can eliminate any of the backup beepers.
Not so much, sorry, Eric. Not so much eliminate them, but mitigate them down to a minimalistic scenario. So there'll always be a backup beeper of some shape or form, but it won't be eight trucks backing up sounding off. So that's why originally, you know, we could be 75 feet away from that one acre lot. We actually proposed, and the original proposal to be 150 feet away from them. I'm trying to create an actual larger buffer. We didn't purchase the property until we got approval from ACHD to come off the roadway. After that, then we decided to purchase the property. The property was up for sale for, I think, 180 days, 90 days at least before we decided to purchase it. Everybody who wanted a view or an opportunity could have easily purchased the property. So we're just trying to get out of our place, which apparently isn't legal, and get to another place.
So did you get into a code enforcement issue on your current?
We did get in a code enforcement issue.
Can I speak really quickly?
Yeah.
So this is Pam Kirshner. We actually had the sheriff submitted a letter, I believe. I don't think, I don't know if it got included, but the sheriff submitted a letter that said that it wasn't any of our neighbors that had complained, but somebody did complain that we were in code violation. So that's why we bought this property. We're trying to be very transparent. They're saying we're not trying to be transparent. We're trying to be very transparent because we don't want to have this issue again. So we're trying to put everything on the table, exactly what we want to do. And we're hoping we're doing the right thing. That's all we want to do.
Yeah, and approximately how many trucks do you think you're going to have working at this property?
So as far as the, the southern portion, we'll have roughly eight vehicles and three, four, five trailers. On what we do on the, the south property along Cunamora, we're still trying to determine what that's going to look like, to be realistic. But once again, everyone's coming, keeping everybody safe.
And I would just like to speak again really quick, Pam Kirshner. So they, they will be devising a lease for us as well that puts, that are in the same issue that we are in. And so we're trying to do that with the least minimal effect on our neighbors. It's on a really far corner away from them and?
It's going to be really horribly simplistic, so.
So the goal with the, with the other contractor's yard is to have multiple tenants in there?
Ideally, one acre lots that are horribly affordable for somebody that's in our?
Lease conditions? Explain that to me.
Mr. Chairman, we, we have not worked on any lease conditions. We just look at the land use itself.
Shreece McLean, MSPT Law for the applicant. We have minimum hours of operation. We're very open and it was an offer that we were going to provide during this to get approval. We would, we would, this is maybe an exhibit to the development agreement, would be, would be this contractor's, contract, I guess, similar akin to getting a storage unit and you're, you're renting a space. And we're all ears. This is a very flexible situation. Right now, the request is for two contractor's yards. One for the landowner to the south and a 10 acre to potentially table it or request your approval. And we would work with your staff to put together, and legal, to put together a development agreement that specifically addresses and satisfies any concerns you?
You know, the only issue I would have is trying to come up with one, you know, set of lease conditions, but not knowing what the, you know, what all the potential renters are going to do. It'd be hard to anticipate every situation that could come up and whether you could have a one-size-fits-all lease that would be in the interest of the neighborhood. I might be able to do it, but?
If I may offer, when in development agreements, a lot of times when there is a rezone involved, for instance, in this particular circumstance to the light industrial, despite the fact that the land use table offers a slew of uses, the development agreement actually narrows it down. And in this one, all we're proposing are contractor's yards. And that's kind of the beauty of a development agreement is you can make it what you want it to be. So if you want to prohibit certain operations, as I understand it from the applicants, all they want to do is be able to provide some opportunity for other small businesses such as ourselves, the same operations that they have. Pick up their pickups and equipment in the morning and come back in the evening. Nothing too far out of that scope. And I believe, they're sitting next to me, so they'll smack me if they disagree, that they, they would limit themselves, the opportunity of this proposed northern portion contractor's yards to be substantially similar to their use of the property as well. So as, no chemicals, nothing, vehicles, machine, in and out.
No structures?
No, no structures whatsoever.
And we would agree with all of that. And if you guys would feel comfortable, we could come back with you with a specific contract that gives limits exactly what type of contractors that, that could utilize the property. We'd be more than willing to do that.
Could you, somebody address fire suppression issues?
We, we are satisfying woofy. And if you see that in that, I call it wooey, Ada County calls it woofy. But all of the requirements under the Wild Urban Interface is being satisfied. And as pointed out by Mr. Williams, the wood chips actually are meant to be an aesthetic birmingham, but they are in fact very green wood. This isn't the, the sagebrush and everything that is a hot pocket out there right now. So it would be beneficial, but as also part of the revised narrative, we would comply and Brent may jump on that if he wants as well. That is a requirement as part of the conditions of approval. So all this required in county code for fire suppression would be satisfied.
How it gets into your yard?
Fair question. Well, the land or the lessee below, you know, animals are animals and they're going to sometimes get out. The no trespassing is just a landowner's right to put in a no trespassing sign up on the fence. And no one loves your fence getting trampled. But certainly, and I will let Pam or Eric, the landowners, speak to that. But I would imagine like anyone's other situation, if an animal got into the property, they would do their best to cooperate to get that property back.
So this is Pam speaking again. So the reason that we put up the no trespassing signs is because during the neighborhood meeting, one of the individuals said that they wanted to come on our land and plant a grass that was a? one of the individuals said that they wanted to come on our land and plant a grass that was a, what is the word that I'm looking for?
We can't hear back here.
A fescue or something?
No, something that was a protected grass on our property so that this would get declined. Like, she said that at the neighborhood meeting, so as soon as we purchased the property, we put up no trespassing signs because.
Yeah, let's try to, I'll talk into the mic, please.
So during a neighborhood meeting, one of the individuals said that they were going to come on our property and place a grass that was a protected grass. So we did put up no trespassing signs because her intent was to stop the procedure by having endangered grass on our property. So it's been very tumultuous, unfortunately.
And this is Sharice McLean again, MSPT Law. And I think just the important part is anybody can put a no trespassing sign. It is their property. But as far as cooperation with the southern portion of the property and cattle, the applicant, like any other good neighbor, would obviously work to get that animal back onto the right side of the fence, so to speak.
And Eric, we've already had three big hogs walk through the property. We've had animals. We, the neighbor across the street's dogs have been in our yard. None of these things really affect us. We're more let live and let live, you know? And so that's kind of our philosophy, you know? We're not here to beat up anyone's cows, or when they damage our fence, we put the fence back up. So once again, there's a barbed wire fence on the other side, so it's not that big of a deal.
How often is, are you or employees going to be on the property? Is it just while you're dropping off the vehicles?
Our current, one of our league guys live at the property now. So there is a residential property there. He stays there with his family. We will, Pam or I will probably be out there at least twice to three times a week. All the other employees will start off there in the morning and then come back in the evening.
So there's generally going to be somebody there if there's an issue. There's a door that can be knocked on.
Yeah, there's somebody who's living at that house, which is our foreman. We gave him a reduced rate to enjoy a nice house out there. So and monitor the yards, maintain the landscaping and protect kind of our interest as well.
I think that's all I have.
Got anything else you want to wrap up?
If I can add, cleared out probably 10 acres and ground cleared it, and then is now a semi-trailer parking lot. And that's of the horse.
That's not part of rebuttal. I apologize.
Okay. All right, go ahead. All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Someone is illegally parking vehicles out there. We have been in touch with the sheriff. We've told him what's going on. The sheriff's been out there. He's working with them, and all likelihood, the trucks are going to get removed. That is not a part of the character like everything else. Thank you.
I have the documents into the record.
Add them up then.
So, Mr. Chairman, Exhibit number 103 will be my presentation. Exhibit number 104 will be the applicant's presentation. And Exhibit number 105 will be Adam Evans' pictures that he showed you.
Okay, and we have no other documents?
Do we get to berm, and why isn't fencing required?
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, the applicant had proposed to have a berm, and so basically yards.
All right, thank you.
I have a question for the staff as well. The applicant has actually requested that if it was the desire of this board.
For legal to help us, so Nicole or one of the other civil attorneys will work with us to draft a development agreement. And we could also, we'd probably have a meeting, set up a meeting with the applicant and development agreement. We would meet with them and work with our attorneys to come up with a development agreement that would meet the interests of both the county and the applicant.
So you need to table this application then?
To do kind of the, you know, development agreement, we probably need probably three or four weeks to do that.
And you'd also need, if we close the public hearing, but we'd probably need to keep it open for the discussion of the development agreement, would we not?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, potentially you respond to.
I think that's, I think that's probably the direction we should go. Go ahead.
You're welcome to close it and limit it to the, what you want specifically to come in, or you can leave it open for a bunch of, for anything to come in. That's up to you, as you're describing.
Well, we've heard, we've heard a lot of information, and we've got a pretty good idea what the, but I think, would you think we should close it? We'll close the public hearing, but keep it open for, just for the development agreement and for the new, any new information. Would that be, would that be appropriate?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So if I, if I understand this correctly, the development agreement would govern who, or under what conditions people could lease the other contractor's yard. So essentially, we'd be kind of spelling out conditions that they would have to put in a lease if they, if we do approve this project, then these conditions would be incorporated into their development agreement, and they would be locked into that. Question to staff.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Davidson, yes, the development agreement will establish the, how this property, this new industrial property can be used. There'll be conditions of approval. You can also attach an exhibit that identifies the details for the lease and what that'll look like. I think there's additional information you'll want to evaluate. And you've heard that there'll be potentially about 10 acres, up to 10 different contractors that may use this site. So I think there's some additional information that you'll want to consider and let people weigh in on. But yes, to answer your question, the development agreement will dictate how the property will be used and what the lease will allow subcontractors, if you will, to do on the property.
So we would not be voting to approve or deny tonight. We're requesting a development agreement to review, and then at that point, we would decide if we wanted to approve or deny this project. Is that correct?
That's the way I understand it, and with the new site plan, because you have, he's proposed a new site plan as well, correct? Yeah. All right, well, with that.
Anything from legal?
Yeah, I would just say if you're going, to be specific, it sounds like you want to table this and limit it only to the things that you want to hear about. What I'm hearing is development agreement with a possible lease as an exhibit and a master site plan. So I would just be specific on the information you're going to want to hear at a date specific.
Well, you're very perceptive.
And Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we would recommend if you do vote to table this, to go ahead and move it to the next public hearing on August 14th.
August 14th? Okay. All right, I think we're pretty clear. Are you ready for a motion?
I believe so.
Okay. Wait a minute, before we do a motion, I will, I will close the public hearing with the exception of the additional information we want for the development agreement and the new site plan.
And you will allow additional testimony?
Well, we'll allow additional testimony for those two items. Okay, go ahead.
I move to table application number 202400314 CPA-ZC-DA-CU-MSP, Kirchner Holdings LLC, to August 14th, 2024, to allow the submission of a development.
Development agreement.
Development agreement to be reviewed by staff and board and revised site plan.
Okay. I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Very none in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, with that, is there anything else we need to have at this?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right, then we'll be adjourned. Thank you.